Okay, now we get started, okay? Ms. Wayne, Ms. Wayne here.
Ms. Wayne?
Ms. Louise.
Yeah. Beautiful one, didn't you?
Yeah. Governor, last month I continued to ask for, um, condition to make some changes in ways every place in my process to do it. You're free, but I'm going to make a quarterly report. Well, since the beginning of the quarter, it's every quarter. Um, this is everything that was done. It's actually everything that was done back here. And then what we need to do is only maybe put the deals and refunds on there. Is that better? The total amount of refund was seven hundred forty-five dollars and ninety-four cents. Total amount of deal value was forty-five thousand six hundred sixty-one dollars. Yeah, it's not, the refunds are not a lot of money. Like I said, it's much more to get filled out and refunded, but it's a good idea for you all to see. Just one day I don't see them three months, so. Any questions?
Mr. Mike Smith?
He ain't a kid, he's, he's been a doctor. But he was coming up to challenge some generated situations for, we may be something to do with the road department or maybe sheriff department. Just looking at two generators, they've got quotes for y'all. The appeal, please remember y'all know the dates he says. One was also for the Jackson Road Fire Department. So it's gonna be something that I guess try to put into Detroit real quick before it is finalized. Rumor that you were putting in fire department or something. They come to us last minute. Uh, we're gonna join the GMAG, which is Georgia Mutual Aid Group. We've been sort of members of it, but not official on paper. Uh, what that is, that's the state mutual aid group. We've, uh, actually utilized the resources before on different calls. When we called Thomas County, Brown County, surrounding counties and stuff like that. And we've also participated when a group of us went to, um, Trawal County to the wildfire with some of our equipment. What I have here is a resolution to give to attorneys to read over and make sure that's up to, uh, art. We don't have to, we don't need to till back in August. He can read over that, but it will be very beneficial. Don't cost the county nothing, so we'll do that. Other than that, fire department's going wide open right now. Waiting on budget like everybody else. Something new, we're fixing to start running a lot more EMS calls. We've teamed up with EMS now and ripping out some more early calls to some of the emergency medical calls that we're gonna start going through such as code blues, if you're under flux and not breathing. A lot more of your major medical calls we're gonna go ahead and get coming out immediately. Those are the ways and if EMS gets unseen inside, they need more help. We're automatically going with them from the first home to those making calls. So it's gonna benefit our citizens to go in and have extra help when they're making calls. But under that, and so I got, uh, said, Mike, what'd they tell on that? I might get the app work and describe that over to our team. That there was just a example resolution they put on there that we put in a spot to it. They'll give you sent the four votes on it, just signed off on it. I don't know if it was issued or they'll, um, start to do all of my recent actions.
Ms. Allen?
Commissioner? Road department, we, we, we study on task. Um, biggest, one of the biggest things that we're focusing on, um, is our work safety out there. Besides the sheriff department, the road department is one of the biggest employees held here. Um, we're just focusing on safety wise, big enough safety, um, seat belts, um, heat exhaustion. Um, another thing too that we're still doing, we're, we're still doing, so we had problems back up when it was all the big rainfall, is, um, we rotate my cover out, bigger cover where it's needed. Uh, we put cover that should have been there. Um, third issue that we're, we're trying to do is our sign issue. We still, we got an ongoing sign problem in this county. And, um, God forbid that it may one day bind us, bind us in our behind because, uh, we have so many signs that's being taken, we have so many signs that need to be put up. It's an ongoing situation here in the county. And another thing too is whatever I made issues that we're, we're focusing on too is a pothole. Um, a pothole in some of our older roads, um, that really begin to cause this now, so we may have to, I get Mr. Ben, but it's, it's upcoming season, see if we can get some of the older roads in the county on the avenue. But other than that, the road department, um, we in better shape than we was a year ago, but we ain't perfect by far. Uh, we're gonna keep, keep pushing through. I mean, you guys got any portions and phone calls that we need to know about and have addressed?
Burton Road.
Burton Road, that's one of our road issues, that's one of our old roads there. You're right, sir. Melon Rock Road. Yeah, that's on that subdivision. That's right, um, we, we dispatched Bill in the morning. I was over there scouting that road Friday afternoon and Saturday. Um, I worked on subdivisions back in, so we're gonna work those subdivision the next few days and, uh, put attention to those potholes in there. And, uh, whatever we need to do, whatever we're gonna pay some attention to, that subdivision while we there. So that is on the agenda to start tomorrow. Yes. Just not Melon Rock, um, Shea Acres one and two.
That was Melon Rock Road that I got called from the date. I offer one twenty-two. A gentleman ran, ran, uh, bust his tire, busted his rear.
Oh, one twenty-two.
But that's this commission, uh, our mission, so I told him that I would speak to you about it.
Yes, that's Melon Rock Road, that's off of, uh, one thirty-three, oh, in the subdivision over there. But, uh, we already had that schedule, we still working that area anyway, so, um, I wish we could have been there before that happened. We had that whole feeling, but, um, we just can't be every place and every time. But we will be there. Um, like I said, I work that area the weekend, so that's already on the agenda there to, to get working. But other than that, any other question?
Ms. Allen? The other county, does the other county have any problem with the issue of, of signs?
Yes, sir.
They having the same problem?
Same, um, um, we don't, I thought it was just Brooks County, but it's everywhere. I've, I've become, uh, socialized with these people, a lot of different kinds of people. We've become good friends now. We, we correspond back and forth to each other. It, it's, it's, it's an ongoing problem. A lot of them is being taken, um, if they got heritage down that dirt road there and their last name ends with the name of that sign up there, guess what? All of a sudden that sign is gone. So I'm pretty sure they put it in a man cave, uh, she shed. It's somewhere. So I'm pretty sure we go in some of these she sheds, the man cave right over the door, we gonna see how some of them signs up there.
I appreciate the she shed, man.
Well, this, you know, a lot of general problem, keep the wires happy, you know, with that beautiful sign with their name on it up there, so. But we, we're not the only ones. Um, that's just gonna be one of those things.
Well, that's had all we've been about.
Yes.
I've been about the lead bet twenty plus years.
Yes, we're not the only county.
So that's the only one.
Further thing, oh, we just gonna have to, in our major areas, we gonna have to make sure that we still keep them addressed because, you know, we don't want to get that accident to happen there because we'll find not being there. So we just gonna have to pay more attention on our, our sign issue here in town. Um, any other question?
Thank you.
Ms. Jessica? Good? Thank you.
Mr. Ben?
Yes, sir.
Oh, one other thing, I'm sorry. Um, we got an accident on Hempstead Creek Road, fourth day Saturday morning. Um, semi truck hits bridge and it caused some damage. And, um, so I got my southern concrete out of Albany, it's gonna be there sometime tomorrow, maybe Wednesday, to start giving us a quote to get ready for the insurance company to turn in. So just pretty likely that after I turn into the office.
Cost of the accident wasn't on roads, was it?
No. Guy, he tried to miss a deer with a semi truck on bridge, hit the brakes, it jackknifed and.
You have injuries resulting from that, okay?
No, no, but a dead deer.
Some people appreciate that.
Let me ask you something. Um, did you have a, 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 um, book with all the roads in with the maps?
I do, um. Mr., um, Billy, Dick, Dickpin, his brother designed that map years ago, fifteen, twenty years ago, probably. And, um, he gave me that map, he made me one when I first got the job a year and a half ago. And, um, Mr. Folsom seen that I had that book and he said it was maybe a good idea that everybody has one, administrator and, um, commissioners, so that, um, y'all know what's road, where you at in the county. But yes, sir, we, um, in the process of trying to get you all something made on that.
I think, I think all the commission need to have one.
Yes, sir, but, um.
Need one for administrator, so we need to be able to know, that we can flick through there?
Right, yes.
We'll find exactly where we are.
It has really helped me in the county when I first got on, because I knew a lot of roads, but I didn't know a lot of roads, so.
Yeah, make sure that all the commission and the administrator get one.
Yes, sir.
Make sure a little part of law you get one. Okay, sure everybody get one, so they'll know it.
No problem, sir.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Okay, thank you, guys. Mr. Ben?
Good evening. First thing on the list, uh, chairman had a call, I think, from Georgia DOT about our bridge project out on the Trueville Road. They asked on to me, I called her back, uh, and the discussion was about our detour that we have set up. Y'all remember we discussed these, I think, last meeting, meeting before. And, uh, the detour that we have set up for that bridge is we're gonna use Stedstil Road on the west side. We're gonna use Cape Road on the east side. Those would be the two roads that you get around that bridge site. There's nothing else in between. They were going to use that, uh, Croweby Town Road, because it's the first road coming off the bridge. I looked at it and it's, it's not in shape to handle that much traffic, especially with trucks. So we had talked to her about using Stedstil and Sted all the way to Cape Road. And what we need is we need for y'all to, I guess, approve that or, or something in the minute that we can pass on to her to get that all for checked with. And find out if y'all had any questions or concerns and all of that before they move on.
Is there something that, that you can put together for us so we can maybe approve it? Is there something, because you more familiar, uh, than I, than we are? You know, the tag, you said go down one road to another one and?
Yeah, I can, I can, uh, put something together and, uh, y'all talk, we have calls, we can pull along and I can, I can get it to you. Get it out in the next few days. I don't think it's, you know, urgent to do it tonight, we just happen to have a meeting on the day she called. So I'll, I'll get that done and, uh, but we, we, you know, we resurfaced Stedstil, we've been doing it in pieces, because we knew this was coming. And we just got through the last section of it and got it striped out there. Looks good, so, so it's ready. The, uh, the LMEG project is coming along. All the roads that, uh, were part of the LMEG Georgia DOT list are paved. Still gotta do some striping and some driveway burnout, but the main roads are paved. The leveling and the circling that's been done.
Did they get, did they get the blue spring?
No, not yet. I went out there today to check on that, he hasn't, I called him in the morning. I did go out though where the road department had put a cone and there was a couple of other bad places. And I marked them off and gave them a number today, so he can see what we're talking about repairing.
Yes.
And I'm talking about cutting them out and repairing them, not that.
He's gonna do it?
Yeah, I totally expect for him to do that while he was out there. And we'll, you know, just add what they reveal to the plan if we've got the contract. They'll be there and handle their footwork every time. Oh, on that subject. His original contract or bid amount and contract on the project was one million, two hundred and seventy-six thousand, eight hundred and thirty-nine dollars and ninety cent. As of paper request number three, which was turned in last Friday, he has earned one million, five thousand, thirty-one dollars and seventy-nine cent. Uh, and as y'all know, all of that, we hold ten percent as jobs finalize, done final inspection. So we're holding a hundred thousand, five hundred and three dollars and eighteen cent until final inspection. But, uh, I, I go through each paper request, uh, they turn in the asphalt tickets. And I double check them against the master list I have where I've estimated quantity that should be used on each road. And I get pretty good, but anyway, I go through each individual ticket, most pile of them when they do this much. Check off the ticket in the way and match it against our estimates. And, uh, make sure that they got a certified weir on there, get it signed. And total loads up and from that, uh, then determine the amount that we need to pay them on each paper request. So it takes a little time. But anyway, uh, they're coming along good, they got paving done. Uh, I gotta hold them to it, they need to get blue springs next. And I'll call him in the morning to find out what color this, but I'll have two phone calls.
Yes, sir, I have a question. I believe it had been about maybe six or seven months ago. We, uh, looked at the road that needs scrapping and we had said that it was gonna get taken care of, they haven't got taken care of yet. You and I rode down the Dry Lake Road, uh, I believe it had been about at least six, seven, maybe eight months ago. And, you know, talking about the day of road that you cannot see, there no white scrapping in the middle of the road. There no white scrapping on the side of the road.
Okay, on this, on this, uh, contract that he's got now, uh, on the Dry Lake Road, we've got, uh, striping from Mailbox ninety-three fifty to seven thousand thirty-nine, about eight. Let's see, that's about two point four miles, looks like. And then we got a section from Hudson Road to the Dixie Barwick Road, there's another eight tent. So you're gonna get about three point two miles of striping out there.
Do you know where that's going, plus it's been about eight months already?
Well, it's in this contract, because we're holding a hundred thousand dollars I made and he'd like to get it done and get through, but. But it is in this contract, it didn't get done before he gets paid.
Thank you, Mr. Dick. Okay. At this time, we want to call our, we're gonna meet in two hours. Okay? At this time, you, uh, have our breath come up and bless us.
Thank you, Mr. Mike Smith. Thank you guys for having us. It's such a pleasure and honor for us to be here. I pray for you guys' reasons and I pray for you guys in the county. So I just pray that we do our best. Father God, we just love you, uh, Jesus, just so thankful for this day and God is thankful for, um, yeah, this beautiful community in this county that we call home. God, pray that you bless over our, our conditioners, God, as they make decisions. God, I pray that decisions be, um, God glorifying and honoring the youth. Um, God, that, that every single person of our community would be a good steward of, of this amazing place that you've given us to call home. God, pray for safety for our road department and our, um, first responders, God, as they, um, so graciously take care of us. And just, we're just so thankful for every single person that called this community home. I pray that you continue to bless us and let everything that we do, everything that we say, God, in attitude of our heart be glorified. In Jesus, we love you. Thank you very much, in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Our pleasure, your reasons, to the life of the United States of America and your republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. At this time, could you give us a motion to approve our agenda, please? Could we get a second on that? Motion is second. All in favor, I? Opposers? Okay. Could we get a motion to approve our amendments? You understand? Our special call meeting, May the twenty-ninth, monthly work session and regular monthly meeting, June the third. And our special call meeting and executive session, June the thirteenth. Could we get a motion to the high place?
How would you like those, is that order? One of those, is that order? Okay. Um, Mr. Chairman, I offer motion that we will approve the special call meeting, May the twenty-ninth, twenty nineteen. Our Monday work session and regular Monday meeting, June the third, twenty nineteen. The special call meeting and executive session, June the thirteenth, twenty nineteen.
Okay. You heard the motion, could we get a second? The motion is second that we approve our amendments, uh, for May the twenty-ninth, June the third and June the thirteenth. Okay? All in favor, would I? Opposers? Okay. More now to our appearance, our first appearance would be Ms. Mary Henley, who has a concern regarding trash.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen.
Hey.
Um, in two thousand eighteen, I came to the board meeting, uh, several months, and I heard other citizens, you know, talking about the, uh, problems and situations with the, uh, advanced, uh, trash companies. And I sat back and I nodded because I was having some of the same issues along with other people. But, um, mine got worse because as of, um, January of two thousand eighteen, I no longer had a trash bin at my house. I made it known to the board in February that I did not have a bin. I even talked with the employee that picked up the, the bin, um, in my area. And he stopped at that moment and he made a phone call to the company and told them that they need a little trash bin out there. And, uh, I never received one. So later, um, there's, um, that Friday, there's a, a contractor that comes around. He picks up the ones that they don't get on that Wednesday. I spoke to him because I still not have a, a trash, a garbage bin. Again, he called the company, he's right there and I asked for where it is and he told them to deliver a bin. I never received the bin. I came down personally to the office at the county and I made it known in March that I didn't have one. I did again in April. Well, May and part of June, I was out of the county. So I came back in on the, um, the eleventh. On the twelfth, I came down to the, back down here and made it known again that it's been six months plus that I have not had a garbage bin. So the young lady, I'm not sure the secretary's name, she got on the phone, she thought, make sure you get a bin. And I left there and I always also talked with the gentleman in the cell, Bill Jolly. And I told him this is the second time and one day that, to make sure I get a bin. And that was in June, um, twelfth. And the gentleman said I would have one in two to three days. Well, on June the eighteenth, I received a bin. Uh, to that time, six months plus, I had not had one to dispose of my garbage. So my, um, reason for being here today is that I would like to know if I can get a tax credit for the six months that I have not had any service.
I don't, I don't think, I wish we could, you understand? Okay? But that, uh, all of that is on your property types. Part of that and, and, and the reason being is because, you know, we switching company now, you know that, don't you?
I heard about that.
Okay, right. We really switching company now. And I'm sure that is, is probably, Ms. Henley, we would love to, but it's more than you. You understand? It's a lot of, we have a lot of issue, we have a lot of issue with advance, a lot of issue. So that's one of the reasons why, is that what we doing now, we went back to Thomasville. And right, and I understand exactly, you know, where you're coming from, because not only you, but as a lot of people in the county, you understand, that really, uh, had poor service, you know what I mean? With, 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 with that particular company. And, uh, since all of that is really, is tied, and I don't know, you know, we got Mr. Wayne here from, from, and we, I don't know, we got Baker here, but it's tied, you know, it's tied with your property types. You understand? In no way we, we can probably go back and pro, pro rate that. But I hope, I, that we're gonna, that, that under the new company, you understand, that you're gonna have better service. All of us have better service.
Well, with that being, and I was here to practice all the, uh, two thousand eighteen and two thousand nineteen, but I never heard anyone say they did not have services for six months. I know that had been discrepancies with the time, weeks and days, that they did not give up their garbage, but a six month, uh, period, and, and the thing about it, it wasn't that I kept it to myself. I made everyone to be known, know that I did not have a service. I started back in February. And I hold the board accountable because no one did anything to do anything about it. And it wasn't that I came one, I came two times.
It was phone calls made to that same company I had called and talked to a person, told me the same thing they told you. You talked to Mr. Trish, the attorney, the same thing, that they were gonna do it. Uh, I mean, for the accountability, accountability, I don't know, why they didn't do, they were telling us the same thing that they were telling you. So we were aware and we was working on it.
Okay, but nobody informed me that, that they called and said, uh, Ms. Henley, didn't you receive the bin yet? No one took that step. No one. So with that being, uh, that was miscommunication about it and it wasn't on my part.
Right. See, what, what we do, Sister Henley, is that once, once, uh, uh, the, the office calls up a man and what they do, um, modify it, they don't follow up on it. We, we are paying them so much a month. And so we did, so what we do, I, you would assume, you know. And so we did, so what we do, I, you would assume, you understand, that once this office called them, you know what I mean, they're gonna proceed, alright, in taking care of our, our company. Mr. Corliss, right, they didn't do that. Because I got modified, I went down, you understand, had the baby set, you understand, one of our time. Because all of a sudden, what happened, the guy said, Mr. Mike, well, so what they do, they, they comes up and they see the garbage can, they turn to go back out, what happened. And so what we did, it kind of, we should do it then, what happened. And tell them, you know, you got to come further down, come further down, you know, and pick up the garbage, you know, after ten, but we had a serious, we are having a serious problem.
Yeah, but that wasn't the case with me, because they came to my house and passed my, and then stopped to pick up a bin, and it wasn't there.
They came to your house to pick up?
They came to my house.
They came to your house to pick up a bin, the bin with them?
Exactly. And then I made it known to the driver at that particular time.
And what did the driver, okay?
The driver said, I'll make sure you have one next week.
Okay, did, 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 did you have one next week?
No, I did not.
Okay.
But I'm saying, even after, after approaching the board, no one, uh, saw fit to call me to see if it had happened.
But the, but the, but the, but the, but the boards, we don't do that. Let me explain to you again, no. If we do that, we'd have to have a, we have to hire a person full-time in order to be able to sit behind the desk and to be able to call the sister, say, do you have, did you get a garbage can? Like, did you get a garbage can? You know that, so what we do, we call the company that is in charge, okay? And because we are paying them, and we tell them that, that Mary, Bob, Joe really need a garbage can on this particular road and this particular address, you understand? And then what we do, and then we will, and sometimes people call back, they'll say, well, I did not get a garbage can, what happened, we'll call again, you understand?
I have to say the young gentleman's name, uh, first name was Ron. After, uh, speaking with Ron, after the, the secretary spoke with Ron, Ron, she said, Ron would definitely do it. So on, um, on that Tuesday, Ron called me, he personally bought a, a bin out there. If someone had told him personally, I would have made sure we had that bin. And so my thing is, I don't know who you're calling, but this particular gentleman that was called on, on that Wednesday prior to that, he made sure, and he said, I'm, I'm personally calling you. And to the point where he called back that, um, Ms. Henley, would you please return our phone call? And which I did, and he said, uh, I do have a bin. He said, I personally bought it out because no one had told him.
Ron worked for G O A? Uh, Vance, G O A, so Vance, wait for Vance? So Ron worked for Vance?
Yes.
Okay.
Ron's a good employee.
Yep. And see, and what happened? And, um, we, we've had some serious problems, you have serious problem with him, okay? Modified even management, I think management was what gave us that number, we had to, we had to kind of bypass office. We bypassed office and then, and we had to go strictly into management, many of y'all thought, y'all give it up and make her, and what happened, and they were very concerned about what was going on, but it's just too late now.
Well, to my thing, you see, when he told me that it is, uh, connected to my taxes, um, my taxes have not been paid as yet because it's not time. So there's the reason why I can't get a tax, uh, should not be a reason why I cannot get a tax credit, I'm not asking for a refund.
You pay?
The taxes have not been paid.
You mean two thousand nineteen taxes?
It doesn't matter.
Okay. I really have no been done. I don't see exactly how we can go back and pay. Maybe, maybe the board knows something.
Maybe you need to go to the executive session.
Something, and maybe we can, we can take a look at it.
I appreciate it.
We can take a look at it. Thank you, appreciate you, thank you very much, okay? Our next, on the, uh, Ms., uh, Ms. Catherine Patrick? Hey, Ms. Catherine.
Hey, dear, how are y'all doing?
How you doing?
Good, um, I am Catherine Patrick, I have replaced Kelly Hanks as the director of the chamber, um, so I'm really excited to be here. Um, I'm coming to you guys tonight to ask permission to use the lawn of the courthouse, um, on the day of the Skillet Festival. So that's gonna be October the nineteenth, two thousand nineteen, from nine AM to four PM. Um, Kelly has been, has done a lot of work, uh, prior to her leaving. All the logistics have been handled, no grass or anything will be harmed, um, and then everything will be cleaned up by Monday morning, uh, following the Skillet Festival. So I'm just here to introduce myself and to ask for permission for the use of the courthouse lawn on October the nineteenth.
I thought y'all started, y'all, did that booze, y'all, having booze?
Um, I, I understand that there was an issue about that last year, um, at this point, this year, we don't have anybody on the agenda. Um, the farmer's daughter in Thomasville was the only, um, was the only vendor that brought alcohol prior to that, um. Last year, there was an issue, and so they just have kind of, have opted out at this point.
So there'll be no booze issue?
To my knowledge, at this point, we don't have anybody.
Okay. I'm, I'm not, I'm not against booze, man.
Yeah, well, I think the issue that we had in the past was that they wanted them to pay an additional fee, I know that they have, um,
The city wanted something too.
Yeah, the city was the one that, that had the issue, um.
With the, with the, with the alcohol?
I think with that alcohol sales, the city has a problem with it.
Yeah, they, they wanted them to pay an additional, they, they went to the, to the vendor and asked them to pay an additional fee, even though the camp, you know, the sale of wouldn't, right, it had already been, the, I believe, as far as my understanding is that, you can purchase and sell a figure of wine in Brooks County, um, and then they had an issue with it, so they just, at that point, the vendor decided, forget it, we'll spell out of it.
Oh, okay. So what is the pleasure of the board, you understand, concerning, you understand, uh, give us half of it.
I offer motion that we, I offer motion that we, uh, grant you permission to use the courthouse lawn for the Skillet Festival.
Okay. The motion is second, you understand, that we grant, you understand, the new chairman's directive, uh, that you're willing to use the Skillet, Skillet House in the October? Any questions and concerns, all in favor, would I? Opposing? Thank you. Good to see you.
Good to see you.
Okay. We got the, Mr. Willie Corliss, the facility used, the I A D building auditorium for, uh, the Mobley County Reunion.
Yes, sir, uh, we requested the, uh, the use of the facility, um, the Reunion coming up this weekend, uh, that's for, uh, Saturday and Sunday. Uh, we even did application, we put the hour on there, we have already paid the fees for the next commission, yes.
Is the county commission invited?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all of us, right? All, everybody invited?
They want to come.
Y'all hear that? Okay, good, good.
I'll make a question, would you carry the use of the I A D building for Mobley County Reunion?
Okay, we get a second on that? Motion is second, you understand, in discussion, question, all in favor, would I? I, 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 okay, opposedes, okay, thanks y'all. Where Mr. Nelson at, Ms. Allen?
Right here.
Come on, Ms. Allen.
It's a good evening.
Evening, Allen, how you doing?
All right. Um, my concern here today was about the Hartmiller Recreation Complex up there on Jackson Road. And, uh, it's been used for different, but right now, it, for the last three to four years, it had not been kept up. The fence been thrown down, it had a press box that went down, that, uh, I think the storm tore down. And all the fences around it have been kept down. So I've been working on it personally for a little while. And right now, I'd say I need some assistance. Because, for, right now, I know Brooks County do have a boys and girls club, but it is put like it's ruined. But, uh, I'm looking at the recreation for older folks, teenagers, all that, that cannot go to the boys and girls club up in the Morgan area and the surrounding area. So we need some there for recreation in the areas.
Who, who, who was that on by, you, the county owner have that property on?
Uh,
Who own that?
They, they, right now, the city said they, it was donated for Hartmiller, who was the city council at the time, when he passed, and then they gained the property here.
You mentioned back in the days, back in the eighties, uh, we used to, uh, Morgan really had a recreation facility up there, that part was designed for the recreation facility before we started playing at the Garden back there. And I'm trying to think, we could go play our ducks, we used to have our, a duck league, a duck softball league, and that's where we used to go to Morgan to play volleyball, up there to their recreation center. But over the years, like you said, somehow, uh, it, it got, I don't know what happened, but we did, I mean, uh, we had, it was a fun, a fun facility, because we was in, down here, and we had a team to play. Is it just a, is it just a field?
Yeah, it's, it's, it's supposed to be a recreation complex, they said totally, it's about five acres of land.
Right. Give a building?
It was a complex, they had everything, cause they used to stand a restaurant, like I said, that's what recreation was at the time, because we, we didn't have the Garden, that's the only place they had. The Garden, come for recreation, so they had a field in Morgan. So we used to go to Morgan to play our ball, they had a, a duck league for men and a duck league for women. Then over the years, we came back in, put the fence up, behind the National Garden, and we, we start playing our hipper recreation.
I think it was lighted too, but.
Yeah, they had the lighting, that's good, they had the lighting and everything.
Why don't we do this, Ms. Allen, okay, of when the new, uh, our new, uh, administrator be coming on board? Why don't we, um, um, take a look at it? Because you, you're representing here, Ms. Mauer. Because Ms. Mauer, when Ms. Mauer get back, and then what we'll do, we're gonna sit down, we're gonna really take a look at that, because I truly believe that they need to open up something in that area, you understand? That's just like, you know, the, uh, in this particular area here, and we gotta have more than just the boys and the girls have known.
You said, you said something about the city equivalent, say, more, more, more. I wonder if we could do some kind of a government agreement?
Well, I talked with David at one time when, uh, I first started working on it. And at that time, he said he would come up and help on it, so I got the field quiet up and, and did all the cleaning, got the trees up, so.
Okay.
And, and then I didn't have a, no other assistance for it, so I, you know, missed the time.
Well, I like, I like what, what commission of those things, is that the county and the city, you understand, the, you know, government agreement?
I don't know if it's an agreement, but that's what I want to find out, that's what I'm here.
Well, I'm saying, that's what we, I'm talking about, that's what we, we will do.
Okay.
Right, to bring that back up to standard, you understand? And we'll have, you know, our administrator be able to kind of look into that, you understand, and what the county commissioned, and then, and then we'll kind of get, maybe the city council, the city council in Morgan up there.
Yeah.
And all of us just work together, you understand, along with the commission, you know, commission of Mauer.
Okay.
You understand, that's right, but we, hey, we got you.
All right, all right.
Okay, that's what we get on this, then, we got you.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, good, okay. Come on, Mr. George Boston Ryan. Congratulations on watching. That is true, Mr. Boston.
My name is George Boston Ryan, I'm from Georgia, I have a social media, uh, YouTube channel called Boston D V R. And I'm addressing the board, the commission, because about ten years ago, I made a trip to Selma and Montgomery, I stayed for a week. And I spent quite a lot of money there. Went to the slave dungeon, I went to the civil rights museum, and some more historic markers there, Birmingham and Montgomery. And when I came back to, I'm from here, I'm a property owner here in the county, and, uh, I brought up here, retired from the Air Force. And on my trip, I said to myself, I'm aware of the week of terror that happened here in Brooks and Loudskine, wherein thirteen to twenty people was murdered, back in the days of segregation. And so to make a long story short, you know, people are getting paid for the museum, the cities are getting the revenue for peak tourists, and, uh, I've been to Rosewood, I've done tours with some universities there, and, uh, people called me from Michigan to take them down there, and I did that. But then I got to thinking about my city, where I went to school here in Quip, Washington Street High School, and the county of Brooks. And whether we like that dirty history or not, commissioners, we can be paid for it. That week of terror when Mary, um, Turner was lynched, along with these other people, that case right now is already known around the world. Professor Mark George erected a historic monument at Folsom Bridge. There's been as many as a hundred and five vehicles from Hayhira to Folsom Bridge. And Walter White did this article back in nineteen eighteen. And it's well-known, I know some of the family members who know about this tragedy that took place here. So, Mr. Chairman, and commission, to reel it in and close it out, I want Quipland and Brooks County to get some of this, these tourist dollars. And so what I would like to do, this is a request, because whether we want it or not, there have been books written, professors from V S U, black and white people have written about the week of terror. But what I would like to get access to is the jail here in Quipland, I would like to go in and film it, if there's any, uh, hazards or legality, I'll sign that away on a release form or whatever. That won't be a problem, but it won't take probably thirty minutes, I wish I had somebody to go in that knew something about it. But I really would like you mission to do that, that's my request. Before you all, sorry, took up so much time, but I want to give you a little background, so you know why I want to do it. In the eyes of the world, if, if you go to Boston D V R and look at some of the videos and see how many video, I mean, how many views it is getting. And that's been Mark George, sorry, on that park at ninety-eight, and it's a beautiful historic marker up there. And, uh, Berlin, uh, the campgrounds, Little Ripper, all of these places could be on that tour route. And all the money will be routed back here in the Brooks County.
In Brooks County.
I just, I just think that'd be a plan, so that's my request, before you all, however you all process, I'm not in a hurry, I don't plan on dying soon, and I don't plan on giving up, so whenever you all get ready, and get back with me, and I thank you very much for your time.
But don't go, one of the company, I know Commissioner Patrick was talking about that, he was saying that we have all those people that come to that Skillet House. And he was talking, me and him were by that jail, and he said, he told us, he said, now, we sitting on some money. Yes, sir. Right here, he said, because all of those people that, that, that come to Brooks County, I mean, that's a, that could be a museum, you know, some of that. Going through there, you understand, it's a, the body.
And that, and that would just be one item.
One item.
Because there's so many, just imagine going to the house or the area where they burned that house down up there in Berlin, where they threw the man over in the river, the three over there. Actually, go out to, to the monument, and I'm still, I know where it is, the white guy that the black man, um, Sidney Johnson did murder, the white guy. And go to his grave, all of that could be on the roof. Now, we may not like the past, but I think all of us can use some money.
Yes, there's money.
Y'all take care of it.
I have a question, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
The Brooks County Jail, that's where the
The Quipland.
The road department, or the Quipland jail?
That, that.
No, no, our jail, the Calisburg.
The Calisburg, that's, that's.
Not the one in town.
The one, the, up on the hobby, uh, hobby, hobby. Know that, that Mitch, Mitch, you know, you know the hot one? Yeah, that's it. Right there, right there, right there, right there, right there. The old, the old, that's what they call it, that's what they call it.
I thought you were talking about the old jail in South.
No, you were telling young man.
I'm, I'm, I'm been in that jail, you've never been in that? You've never been in that jail?
Well, I wanna go, but I was about to leave the door. Thank y'all very much.
Okay, good, all right. Okay, good, good, okay. Um, so, go you go.
Yeah.
We'll come over and meet some.
Hi folks, how you all doing?
Hey, hey.
Can you scout, make money, try to figure out where you have to get money for school? That's what we're doing again, one of our events, at our clubhouse, and a field on the thirtieth of July. All those people, we have to, something for the school.
In the community area?
I'm really grateful. Thank you for your time, I really appreciate being here.
Let's go back and, 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 Mr. George Boston Ryan, because we gotta make a decision on that, we gotta take a vote, right? Well, we don't need to take a vote on that, you stay right there, don't go nowhere, okay? What is, right, well, what is the pleasure of the board concerning Mr. George, uh, Ryan, uh, request to tour the old county jail?
Uh, we should, we should do it, right?
The motion is second, you understand, what we allow Mr. George Boston Ryan, uh, to tour the old county jail, that's right, take pictures and everything else, and, and, what happened? All in favor, would I? Opposedes, okay, Mr. Ryan, you got it.
Thank you very much, I, I.
I'll bet you when you go.
Uh-huh?
I'll, I'll go.
Yes, sir, I, I appreciate that, and I hope I could compliment my city and my county when I come.
Got you now.
Thank you.
I'll go with you, I stay with you, man. You better go with Sean. He's still inside.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
You just kind of stop and wait, we'll get it for you.
Yeah, oh yeah, I'll sign three of them.
The county administrator will get in touch with you.
That'll work, yes, and I'm not in a hurry, whatever, I'm ready.
I got you, Mr. Ryan, all right, okay. What you need to do, you, you, you need a motion really, to be able to sell the bill and the wine. When we do this area here, I mean, you get two a year.
This is the second one.
You get something one night, you get two a year, okay? Everything is in order for him, so what is the pleasure of the board?
I think, I would want to take a order that, uh, Mr. Creepo gets his permit, uh, to request him to be a beer wine salesman for July the third.
We get the second, motion is second, and a discussion, all of it, what I? Okay, thank you, and you're doing a good job, keep up the good work, okay? Okay. Where Miss May here, Miss May?
Right here. I think I had two things on agenda, I might just skip off to one, because I think it's the most, I mean, this one, and that is the, the, um, status of I T in accounting. As it relates to an I T department, we updated the website, and most recently, I'm concerned, um, since I put my agenda request in on the twenty sixth, it's become evident to me, and I'll pass this out, so that you may also know, and you may already be aware, that Lake City became victim to a ransomware hackers. And to the amount of four hundred and sixty thousand dollars, and I'd like to ask the board if they can investigate that we have insurance against this type of thing happening um, to our county. Um, I think Lake City became responsible for ten thousand dollars, I.
Your fine, your fine, I'll take a copy of it.
Thank you. Um, ultimately was, was possible for ten thousand dollars worth of debt, because of the insurance. So, and, and if you might possibly get back to me as to when the, um, website may be updated, is it the current commissioners? And I'm also aware that, uh, the most recent commissioners, uh, females were not properly working. And, and so it's very important to be able to, uh, communicate with them in that way, so that we can best with that in the county, in the county.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Paul Gates?
Ladies and gentlemen of the commission, ladies and gentlemen of the audience, we were here in April, lovely guy made the presentation and, uh, attempted to open the precinct, voting precinct back up in Barney. And it's my turn, we're coming back, and then we've got a little more information, and Mr. Maxwell and Mr. Rose on us to provide us with some additional information that everybody should check in to. Uh, one of the, the views of facts that came up in the April meeting, the Barney area, we had our own voting precinct.
When you addressed the board.
Yeah.
Right.
District lead board?
You addressed the board.
Addressed the board.
Yeah, you addressed the, the board.
These are our votes.
Right.
All right, we had a voting precinct in Barney. We had two voters, and, so essentially, there's no additional cost to bring the voting back into Barney. We had local people who tended to do voting precinct in Barney, and we still have local people that are volunteering to assist in any voting there, so there's no additional problem there. We now have a new fire station in Barney that has a handicap bathroom, and it's on land that was donated by this hating thing at the time, there was promised that it would also be used for having the voting brought back to Barney. There's also a firehouse in the city of Payville that was built, it's not even being banned by any volunteers that we know of, but it's used primarily for voting precincts in Barney, in, in Payville. We've also discovered that there were a lot of people, and this was mentioned, that working people, and myself, I was one of them, it was easy when you were going to work, a lot of people in that area, go to Colquitt County, they might go to Lounes County, they might work at Brooks County, but still, they would swing by, vote first thing in the morning, polls opened up at seven o'clock, then go on to work. Same thing that became awful, where if they could stop by the voting precinct in Barney, vote to be in and out, the lines were not long. Now, the voting precinct would move to Morbin, and you've now got, where they've got to go five to ten miles out of their way, they get down there, and the lines are backed up. Then they get off of work, they come back, the lines are backed up, and Morbin trying to vote. So what do they do? They don't vote, they just bypass it. We have the same thing with the older people, that because of the distance, they now have to travel, instead of being right there in the Barney area community that was very convenient, and instead of going to Morbin, you know, they don't vote. And then, of course, you have the poor people, and there are plenty of them that don't have means of transportation, they're not going there, whereas they, right there in the Barney area, they were able to do that. Now, a couple of things, and I've got some documentation that we discovered, that we looked at too, I don't know whether I need to, you, you had said at one time, while at the last, at the April meeting, that a state person had told you that the goal is to consolidate everything down to the good city equipment, to close up all the polling places. And then, of course, at the same time, Mr. Wret said he was gonna do some checking in the details, we'd, we'd like to know who that person was that we talked to, what the state said that, and of course, at the same time, we'd like to know from Mr. Wret, what he found out. Now, I've got some additional information, because we did some checking ourselves, and I've got a couple of handouts here. One of our citizens talked to the state of Georgia, the director of the elections, he sent an email, I know he passed out some, but according to the email, there's no truth to the allegation that the state has required the consolidation of polling places, the selection of polling places and consolidation or expansion of the county decision. This is from the director of the elections. All right. You might recall that we had a election just recently.
Yes.
That was, we have a large county next to ours called Lounes, there is, they have voting precincts at V S U. It turns out that not a lot of people, we do think they have voting precincts at V S U, and they decided to close it down. Well, you might have read in the paper and heard on the news that all Hades broke loose, because all of these students determined that they were having their votes suppressed, and they were gonna have to travel probably, possibly three hundred feet or more to go to another voting place to vote. Of course, at the same time, they also discovered that the students learned that you have to vote where you reside, you don't vote where you're going to college at. And so they were all of a sudden disenfranchised, and they were complaining. But at the same time, after they closed it, the A C L U got involved, and there was also talk about, of course, the voter suppression, and even three advances, because they were closing the place down. Well, apparently now the voting precinct at V S U is not being opened up again. So it's, it's a case where polling places precincts can be reopened. There's also an editorial in the B D Times, I've got a copy of that also, with all the challenges that have been coming up with the voting. And it's, one of the main things it talks about, or one of the many items that it talks about, it says, perhaps even more concerning are efforts by local election commissions to close polling places. And they talked about Randolph County, where they tried to close nine polling places. And of course, we got voter suppression, the poor, and the disenfranchised weren't gonna be able to vote, because they were trying to consolidate, it was contested one commission. The state of Georgia came back and shut that down in part three. But, but you might get, uh, I lost the paper, I lost, but I just circled that one thing, but it's, this is from Zachary, Mr. Zachary, the editor and chief of several papers.
One, one of the thing that we can do to, to, uh, save the time, Mr. Paul.
Almost done.
I understand exactly where you're coming from, and I think of what we probably need to, we probably need to be able to get the election supervisor involved, because you're talking about, I, 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 um, um, gotta make sure, you understand, that the place, that the voting, uh, uh, is, uh, precinct, because I think he was talking about, this time, you understand, you've got to have lodge of rooms, something like that.
And Mr. Mr. Eggers here is, is an expert on A D A, uh, standards and things like that, and I think, wasn't the firehouse built?
The firehouse has a handicap accessible bathroom to current building code standards, the Georgia building code standards.
Right.
Handrails, accessibility, turning radiuses for wheelchairs.
And it does meet the criteria for.
And the building itself, the building itself is a sixty by forty building.
Okay.
The trucks can be parked in the apron, like in any other firehouse, it's used as a polling place, and there's no problem there.
So we.
The building was also built with the intention of being used as a polling place, there was an agreement made.
It has air conditioning as well.
Yeah, and air conditioning is no problem, we've had people come out and give us close to putting it in.
Why don't we, why don't we have the, uh, the child go up, and he'll assess it. Yeah, just, just to tell the election, to supervise the election.
Yes.
Whatnot, they'll let him go up, you know, on the road, and make sure, let him take a look, let him take a look at it.
From what, from all I understand is, really and truly, it's the commissioners that can reinstate or.
Yeah, we, right.
Close a polling place. So really, I mean, to let everybody know, really it falls on us.
It does.
Doesn't fall on you, doesn't fall on the election supervisor, or on us.
Well, the, the main thing to remember is that we've got, the voting machines were there in Barney at one time, we had a polling place or precinct there at one time, we had the volunteers there, and we still.
Yes, Mr. Smith as well.
Mr. Smith.
Mr. Maxwell, currently that building's identical to the voting precinct in Payville, uh, we do have to make some changes to Barney. The access to the building is not wheelchair accessible right now unless you use the front pad, which is the book file. It has a ramp, and we'll let you in, and the doors have to stay open during voting, I don't know if that meets the voting rules or not, but very small and pricey wood, wood cost to get that building up, too far for voting, the only other difference is there's not currently an air conditioner that can be added.
Okay.
But you're looking at two of the same identical buildings over there.
I want to hear all the side, kind of get together with this room, and then, uh, go up and take a look at it, and then, uh, uh, we'll go with it.
Uh, they, you'd also have to redraw the whole county district map as well, which I don't know what all that would entail.
Put it back the way it was.
Yeah, man.
I don't know.
I don't know, the new voting district, district, till we still there.
Yeah.
Why don't we, uh, let's, let's have you all take a look at it, and then, and then we'll put on the agenda, we'll put on the agenda.
When you wanted to special call me?
Well, we gotta have, we all have some, but I know that we gonna have to meet, um, him the guy said we need to have a special call meeting. The four to thirteen, we're trying to meet the four to thirteen.
So, uh, I'll get Charles next week, and I'll.
And then let us know, then we have a special call.
Let's look for, uh, first of the week, then with Tuesday next week. Tuesday or Wednesday next week?
Yes, and then we'll have a call meeting, uh, later on, that's what I'm, I'm, thank you, okay? Thank you, okay, appreciate that. New business, okay, we got the, uh, we got the adoption, um, that's, that's you, title, title sec, the plan of, uh, update by the Brooks, Brook County and Brooks, trans.
We have to update it every two years, and this year was time for a update, and working on since March, finally got it, we got the money, so now just ready to be adopted by the board, send back to the, to the, to the.
Okay, what is the pleasure of the board? Okay, okay, and the motion, you understand, that we approved, uh, the adoption of sex plan update, was that go ahead and suck it? That be motion and suck it, you understand, and a discussion, all of it, what I, okay? Next, on the, the coal, uh, the coal house roof roof, okay, we got that on your, in your package, Azalea City Roofing and Construction, I think they got a total of, uh, a little over six thousand, and they can kind of go up there and kind of clear that, the water area out, and, and, uh, simply can kind of get that roof, um, fixed, okay? Good, so what is the, uh, pleasure of the board? Y'all can hit them there, it'll be five B. Okay. What is the pleasure of the board concerning, uh, Azalea City Roofing and Construction, fixing the, uh, coal house roof?
Chairman, I approve the coal from Azalea City Roofing in, in construction, to apparently at coal house roof.
Okay, in the amount of, uh, six thousand, three hundred and fifty, two seconds, we got to change that, I'm, that's not in the, uh, that's not in the.
This is maintenance.
Not, uh, maintenance, do we have, do we have any maintenance?
I have to check with Chairman tomorrow, see if it's there, if not, then we'll have to come to the contingency, so you can do it contingent upon the funds being in, uh, the maintenance.
Now, these, these materials for this fund have a month lead, uh, they're gonna need to pay before, or they pay after, and if it's after, could we?
So we have month, but they do have material.
Go, connect your buddy. Okay, good, we did, you go to the next your buddy, you make a motion, okay, that'd be fine, make a call.
There's no, there's no material warranty, like, so what type of roof is it? Maybe shingle?
Mr. Mike, is that the shingle roof? Mr. Bean, what kind of roof is that, the shingle?
I couldn't say.
That's a shingle roof. How that's the name, put that, the shingle, going to, then we're going to, that already is another issue.
I think he gave her five years, what he did check?
That's, that's where it didn't work.
He didn't did what, what, five years on the, uh, repair?
Man, you're a work, work, that's his work.
It's what?
Not supplies.
Not the third one.
Not the annual thing. I know that's, you know, kind of needs.
We need to go back.
Oh, sure. Thank you, I'm going to go back, you know, we go back, it was a description of what you did.
Okay.
Did, did we also get one, one bid?
No, this is a special sort of sense, we already did the roof at, uh, self department, and when you get something done at the coal house, to cover some other issues, and the roof has to be, for those issues can be repaired, so it's kind of.
Since he was already on.
Yeah.
Since he was already on ground.
And it's hard to get, um, somebody, because it took it a while to get, you know, we had, um, probably had to try for a while to get somebody to come look at it.
What came to ask is a warranty on the materials itself, and also, I think we're gonna have to put it out in the bid, with one person, regardless of the circumstance, unless it's emergency circumstance.
It kind of is.
Is it?
Yeah, we got a, bad, it does something to the judges here, that's in the judge's chair. Yeah.
So that's an emergency?
The, uh, the request, the, the. That's why I'll become.
I, I get, I have the, um.
No. Yeah, we're gonna do it now. Y'all just, we want to consent the judges, so they complain. Yeah, they have to get up there. Yeah, we'll, we'll take it from the contingency. Just go, that's part of your motion, and want to come out the contingency. Do we get a supplement?
The motion here, we approve.
I can't hear what you got to say.
We proudly get the courthouse, uh, provided, that they provide a warrant on the material of six thousand, three hundred, nine hundred and fifty-two cents. Did I get that right?
Okay. The motion and sucker, any more discussion? All is fair and well, I? I am, okay, good, okay, thank y'all, okay. The judge is gonna be very happy. That's right, they're gonna be pleased, thank you, okay? Okay, let me share, let me do it, come on up and see if we can get those, uh, two automobiles.
To go back to the courthouse thing, how many gets, uh, uh, material defect? Because it was leaking right after they put that roof on. And that's been since I took off, so that's been within here.
I think he's saying something about the guns. Saying something about.
It was, it was pouring in a pouring one. But this, this deal with the vehicles, I've got two investigators, one of them's driving a marked unit that should be in uniform patrol. Other one has a plain unmarked unit with a lot of miles on it that's starting to get a stroke. And they call that company down there in Tallahassee that we deal with, they've got two two thousand and twelve Chevrolet Tahos down there. They have a price tag thirteen-nine on them, but they told me if they, we could take both of them, they do it for ten dollars a week. And they're in good shape.
The sheriff, the sheriff has some money in his.
He has, he has some, uh.
Well, we have some left over in the budget from when we purchased ours.
He might fifty-seven thousand dollars in his budget. For the, uh, captain group, so you have plenty of money in the budget to get that, so what is the pleasure of the board?
I think, uh, that we should approve Sheriff Drew Lecrest for purchase of new vehicles at twenty thousand dollars, ten thousand pieces.
Okay, okay. The supplement, motion and sucker, any discussion? All is fair and well, I?
I.
Mr. Sheriff, you got it? Thank you, okay. Before that one finished, been on six eight, uh, commissioner, uh, Rowan, Commissioner Cooley, I'd like to table that, till we get a full vote tomorrow. And also, uh, active Eli on the appointment, okay, because make sure that they are here also, so we want to table that, let's table that. Okay, yeah, the library, but let's table that. Can we get a motion?
Do we have any people sending applications?
Yeah, we got some, we got some, we got one, one after that. But I think that what we need to do is, yeah, let Marra. Okay, can we get a motion? To table that.
I make a motion to retable the, uh, Department of Labor Board to our special call meeting. Our next special call meeting.
Okay.
Sir.
All we think of that? Okay, next one down to ACCG, the family album, okay, Mr. Fisher?
Um, ACCG, this is a family album each year, the family has not participated in probably over six years. So I'll put that on there, see if you all would be interested in participating this year.
I think it'd be very good, because what we need to do, we need to kind of show Brooks County, it's a shame, but when, when we get that modified, you know, Mr. Cooley, when you look through it, all of the county, you don't see Brooks County, you don't see us in there, and I think we got something to show, because you know, we got the chicken factory, and one of the things that we can show, maybe some other things to, uh, what else has, has probably come up in the last past, you know, year, okay? But what we need to do, we need to be, I think it would be a good, I think it'd be very good with, with this, with this county.
With its size, would you choose, what size page?
Uh, we get a, what, we get a half a page, or we get a full page?
May I recommend the blue color, whichever we do?
Yeah, blue color, yeah.
It's much, much more presentable.
And so, and so, uh, we can do. What else, the half page, and we can do the full page, seven and eight.
Half page is nine thirty-nine.
Yeah. You can do a half page, right, the half page is what, seven thirty-nine?
Nine thirty-nine, same color.
So what is the pleasure of the board, okay, concerning, so concerning that? Two third of a page, a thousand dollars, a half page is, uh, nine thirty-nine, color. Okay, you wanna go with the half page or the full page? How many miles per year, she'll get colored?
We'll go get it, yeah.
That's right.
That's my.
Just decide how big we want it.
That's right.
How much money we got in the contingency? We got nothing, I got, yeah, we still got money in the contingency, all right, okay? Let's go on the full page, don't have nobody in there but Brooks County. Let, let's take the full page, y'all, when we, when we step out, to help Brooks County now, let's step out.
I make a motion that we, uh, that we buy a full page in color in the AACG county. At two thousand nineteen twenty-two.
Okay. Okay, the motion is something that, that we put a full page in ACCG, okay, magazine, full page, okay, uh, for Brooks County. Any discussion? All is fair and well, I? Okay, good, okay. All you, all the best, okay, good, yeah, very much, yeah. Okay, moving them down. Brooks County Retreat, okay? Boy, this, we're making history now, y'all. We never had a, I've been on board for twenty plus years, and, uh, Brooks County, we never had a retreat, you understand, for the county commissioners. And, um, you understand, and also, you understand, department head. And what happened is this time is that, um, Scott Johnson, you understand, that's one of the consultants, and they're the one who helping us put a lot of things together. And, uh, we really want us to be able to, to have a retreat. Other county commissioners, you understand, they take off and they go to the island and all that kind of stuff like that. Boy, they go to Las Vegas and all that stuff like that, yeah. Well, we can't do that yet, so what we can do, we are going to, yeah, we are, we are going to Las Vegas, but we're gonna go to the rainwater center. Y'all, that's about closer to Las Vegas, we don't get, that's exactly what happened over there. And so we're going over there, it'll be on the thirteenth, and what we're gonna do, we're gonna open it up to all the department heads. All the department heads is gonna come in that morning at Chala Club, and then we're gonna feed them a wonderful, wonderful buffet lunch. And department head, after y'all eat that lunch, then y'all can leave. Cause then the county commissioner is gonna talk about y'all, okay, just joking, okay?
Kind of a last meal, right?
That'll be your last meal, we ain't lying, the county commissioner will be there, you, you're gonna be talking about y'all. Uh, uh, Miss Bondi Home, you're welcome to come, to take some pictures, be at, it'll be July the thirteenth at the Rainwater Center. Right, and that's open from ten to five, and, uh, you could be there for a while, to make sure you take some pictures of all of us and so forth, okay? That's good, um, what I would like also, and I think I told somebody that, you need to be able to also, uh, Mr. Sheriff, we need to bring, well, I think we got, what, number thirty?
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five? But, uh, if you have a lead person in your department, you, I think you need to bring that person too. The per, just in case if you out, if you are sick, you need to be able to bring that person with you, okay, so they can hear what's going on, so, uh.
Well, listen, I'm, I'll be getting together, get it, have time together.
Okay, make sure y'all, y'all, if y'all want to, you understand, we leave it up to you all, what you want to do, okay? Good, okay, and so that will be on the, that will be on the, on the, on the thirteenth of, uh, July. The first Monday, you understand, we overhead, and be at the Rainwater Center in Valdosta, okay? We could use part of you.
From the money you got.
Okay, um, the delicious, delicious menu, I can send it up and I can, uh, put that in, you know? What do they have, all kinds of stuff, right?
We have to decide on what you wanna hit.
We are, we are, after we, after we approve, only thing we have to do, we have to prove the retreat, right? We'll prove the retreat, and we'll let the administrator, y'all, y'all can take that right. Can we get a motion, you understand, to approve the, uh, retreat for the county commissioner, okay? And also the, uh, department head at the Rainwater Center, uh, July the thirteenth, November two thousand and nineteen, from ten to five.
This is the town, I don't know if we ever approved that, uh, approved department head. And the condition is two out of thirteen, two thousand and nineteen.
Can we get a supplement on that?
I think the retreat's a great idea, I just think it's, I, I mean, seven hundred and sixty-seven dollars to go have lunch and talk, you know, it's a little. I'm just being honest, they need to know how much it's gonna cost, it's their money that we're spending. I mean, personally, I think if everybody took lunch and went there, what's the lunch staple, twenty-five bucks? I think that would be cheaper than paying that much money, and why can't we go there?
Well, well.
Remember that, that's just my opinion.
Yeah, but, but, if a county commissioner, you understand, or you understand, if a county commissioner takes off, and we go, a retreat of only training or something like that? Cause this is a part of training also, uh, for that one county commissioner, you understand, for that one day, two like that, it'll cost more than that for that one person. You see that? It's there in a hotel.
No, I, I think the retreat, getting together, talking about things need to happen, needs to happen. I don't agree with spending seven hundred and sixty-seven dollars, eighty cents on, that's just my opinion. You know, but I'm just one person, I'm just one person.
Well, what you suggest? If you don't, yeah, okay, that's the retreat at time, it's education, they're gonna come, they're gonna bring their people in, uh, you know.
Yeah, like I said, I think the talk's not a problem, I mean, I just think seven hundred dollars for food's a little ridiculous. That's just me.
Well, you see that, uh, I guess, well, that was one of, that was one of, was, was the, uh, one particular menu, something to be, and I think they have other things that, too. If you really wanna scale that down, you wanna, what do you wanna do, approve the retreat and be able to have a lesser, lesser meal?
Well, and, and, and just so, just for note, on the breakout, the food is actually four fifty, there's a cost of equipment for us to do the presentation and have, um, have our consultants come in and, you know, proper A V equipment and things like that.
So the consultant price in, in the, in, in the proposal here?
Well, there, there's no charge for the, yeah, yeah, no, sir, no, sir.
See, the food is on the four fifty.
The equipment is one fifty, I mean, I don't know if we can obtain equipment from somewhere else, or, Ms. Patricia, that's either.
Am I sure what that means by, uh, equipment, because we won't need it as opposed to.
We don't need that, boy, man.
The other charges, the other feature we don't.
We got that, we don't need that.
Charge us thirty bucks for a, for a table call. I mean, right there, that's a hundred and fifty-five, six, okay, it's not seven hundred and sixty-seven. It's six hundred and thirty dollars, I'm sorry, for, for dinner, plus the equipment that we don't need. I know, that's just my opinion, man.
So the fourth, the, well, the four fifty is just for the food, take the one fifty off, you understand? So what happens, we're not paying the equipment because, uh, Scott now is bringing all the equipment with him, so we don't need, the only thing we need is a run of the building and the food. Okay?
So we need a, we need a, uh, a revamped proposal, correct?
Right, okay, well, if, if we approve the re- retreat, and then let the administrator then, okay, revamp the, uh, the request, something like that. If you don't want to, uh, just to, make sure we approve the retreat at the county commissioner, you know what I mean? And the, uh, department head can have the retreat at the Rainwater Center, or leave it up to the administrator and, uh, them, so they can revamp the, uh, I guess the amount.
I make a motion, we, we have a retreat on the thirteenth from ten to five at the Rainwater, um, Conference Center in Valdosta. Um, and I think we approve it upon seeing a renovated invoice here that doesn't charge us for the things we don't need.
Has the director made a motion?
He made that a motion.
Without the, uh.
He made that a motion. Can we get a supplement?
I see.
Okay, motion and something, any more discussion? All is fair and well, I? I'll post it, okay, we got, uh, okay, good, so we have a, we have a retreat. Got a retreat. Mr. Cooley, what you got for us tonight?
I want to thank everybody for coming, um, thanks, uh, everybody's hard work, the department's been great. C I D, Jesus, how many times you had to call a car to go get a record, get the car out in front of my building, you guys eating there. Thank you for rescuing the turtles the other day, Judge, um, welcome to the chamber, Mr. Spencer. Thanks everybody for coming here.
Okay, Mr. Pastor, not here, Mr. Cooley?
Have anything to say?
Anything to say, okay, right, well, that's right, uh, we'll see y'all, you understand, uh, most of y'all will be here on July the fifth, you understand, and have a big concern. And, uh, and, uh, we, uh, wait that all of y'all get home safe and sound and go to the jail, you know, thank you. Thank you, motion and adjournments. KVCI dot blogspot dot com, Washington Street High School, class of nineteen seventy. Let's go through your book and view a few pictures and pages. Wildcat staff, chief editor, et cetera, et cetera, right on down the line. Jada Adams, Amos Bell, Polly Ashley, Prince Brown, Anthony Monroe, Patrice Moore, Carolyn Mobley, Sandra Denson, Bessie Goines. Here's R T Adams, advisor, Washington Street High School, the Wildcats, nineteen seven, Quipman, Georgia, nineteen seven, Quipman, Georgia. Wildcat staff. Uh, Miss Washington Street High, nineteen sixty-nine, nineteen seventy. Sylvia Marable. Forward.
Forward. Dedication. Teacher of the year. Wonder who that could have been? Miss Mary Wright Stevens. And of course, that was a segregated school back in the day, but we had a white superintendent. And of course, we salute by the one only. Mister Robert Cornelius Marshall. And of course. Florence Louise Butts. Oh, I better not show these pictures, I hope I don't get shot for this. So we're gonna go through these real fast. That people don't get angry with me. But it is, this is a matter of record. It is indeed. A matter of record. Let's go back and do it again. This was an all-black school, by the way. We didn't know how good we had it at the time. Oh, we was proud, but. We just didn't know how good we had it. We really did not know. Nor did we appreciate. What we had. One thing for sure. We had educators that cared. Who understood us. They was a part of the struggle that we all came from. It seems like we've lost a lot of that. Our children have lost a lot. But we are a strong people. We have endured a lot. And we will endure some more. But I'm a firm believer. As many of these educators were. That God will not put any more on us. Than we can bear. And of course. The next page is the students. And they probably don't want me to show their pictures, and so I think we'll close this out. By the way, the water that you hear, the reason I chose to have water in the background. Because we were at the time the living waters of today. And truer we are. The waters of today. This is why we must ensure. That our children receive a quality education. So they can be. The leaders of tomorrow. On behalf of K V C I, George Boston Rhymes. In Valdosta, Georgia. Doing what I do. Keeping the people informed of a history. That seems to be lost. Unless we. Retain it ourselves and erect monuments and statues. To remember. All the schools of, of higher learning. Thank you for listening. And watching.